Oh, my phone says seven o'clock, so I would like to call the meeting to order, please. Um, Faye, would you do a roll call for us?
Randy Rickert.
Here.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Leanne Quinn.
Here.
Here. Ali Stefan.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Linda Newton, where it is.
Here.
Matt Mansfield. Oh, and he's right there. He's, he's just promoting him to panelists. Matt Mansfield.
Here.
Jose Valiopondo.
Here.
Um, I'm wondering if there are any public comments um that are not on the agenda at the moment?
I see some hands in the um waiting room.
You do see some hands?
I said, I did not see any hands, no hands, no hands.
Oh, okay. So since we have none, uh let's move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from uh one nine twenty five?
Commissioner Quinn, I move that we approve the minutes from January.
Commissioner Wright, a second.
And do we do a roll call on that, Faye?
No, that's typically a voice vote or raise of hands.
Okay. So I guess we'll raise our hands. And I think it looks like the motion passes. This is kind of quirky. I've only seen four hands, but I think that's because it's my computer. Um. Yeah, I think motion passes. I see kind of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven hands, I believe. So. So on the agenda, we have a quasi judicial public hearing um regarding a hundred unit planned unit development on three eight oh nine northeast Springbrook Road. Um. So I'd like to open the uh public hearing on that. Um, we're going to first call for any abstentions by ex parte contact and objections to jurisdiction. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. And I'm gonna lower my hand too, I think, or maybe my hand is lowered. Um. So. Faye, could you read the um? I'm not even sure what it's called. I know that we're supposed to read something before we start though, right?
Yes, usually we'll have the student do it, but since this is weird and Elise hasn't been here uh for a meeting in person ahead, I'll go ahead and read the the uh of the um testimony of evidence requirements of ORS one nine seven 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 six three requires there are certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. Sid, this means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicant criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or straight state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which must might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Boards of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that issue that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision measure and parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up, bring it out, LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval and enough enough to allow the local government or assess a need to respond to the issue preludes an action of damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Okay, so um can we move on to the staff report, please?
All right, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. Uh, meeting commission, my name is James Dingwall, I'm the assistant planner for the city. Tonight, we're gonna be looking at the Nagoma Springbrook Plan Unit Development, case file number P D twenty four zero 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 one. I enter this app report into the record. The applicant is E T Joe USA, and the owners are Ross and Roland Kerr. The request is for a one hundred lot, single family residential plant unit development. The P D is proposed at thirty eight oh nine northeast Springbrook Road, tax lot R thirty two oh nine twenty three hundred on the north end of Newburgh. The site is owned R one low density residential and R three high density residential is within the airport overlay sub district and a portion of the site along the eastern boundary is in the stream corridor overlay sub district. Public utilities, including water, sewer and storm sewer currently extend to the end of North Springbrook Road to the city limits. You can see here the preliminary plat tentative plat submitted with the application materials. The P D contains a hundred lots for residential development and for um non residential tracks. The property was annexed in twenty twenty four, the ordinance number twenty twenty four twenty nine thirty one, which included conditions of approval um for future development that are incorporated into this decision. A planned unit development is a two step process, the first being a type three step one decision of preliminary plan approval, which is tonight, followed by a type one step to final plan approval. That if the decision of the planning commission is final, unless appealed to city council, the application was sent for a referral review on December tenth twenty twenty four and mailed and posted notice was completed on January twenty third and twenty fourth twenty twenty five. Notice of the hearing was also published in four public places and in the Newburgh graphic on January thirtieth twenty twenty five. Tonight, we'll be reviewing a summary of the applicable criteria and conditions of approval proposed. This includes the planned unit development regulations in Newark Municipal Code fifteen two forty, zoning criteria in N M C fifteen three oh five, three forty and three forty two, development standards in N M C fifteen four oh five through four forty and public improvement standards in at in N M C fifteen point five oh five. Starting with the planning development regulations, the site is owned in common by Ross and Roland Kerr. And tonight, tonight's approval is step one of the two step P D process. The application materials and findings demonstrate how the applicant has made an effort to preserve natural amenities, create an attractive, safe, efficient and stable environment compatible with surrounding or planned uses that meet the standards of the Newark Municipal Code. No phasing is proposed, and the applicant has acknowledged the processes for lapse of P D approval and for recent metal following expiration. N M C fifteen two forty twenty F provides the density limitations for planned unit developments. The total site is nineteen point sixteen gross acres, sixteen point fourteen acres of R one low density residential and three point oh two acres of R three high density residential. This acreage allows a maximum of four thousand seven hundred and seventy five point three density points. The proposed planning development includes seventeen three bedroom dwellings and eighty three four bedroom dwellings using a total of three thousand three hundred and eighty one density points less than the maximum allowed. The planning development is proposing single family dwellings, which are permitted use in the R one and R three zoning districts. The applicant has also submitted through a professional coordinator and design team. The applicant is requesting three modifications through the be the P D approval process. First is a modification to the minimum lot frontage for three lots in the planning development. N M C fifteen four oh five thirty requires that each lot have either frontage on a public street of twenty five feet or access through an easement at least twenty five feet wide. As shown on the right side of this slide, the P lots eighty two and eighty three are proposed as flag lots with a shared access easement adjacent to lots fifty six and fifty seven. The proposed access is twenty feet in width. The P U D also proposes lot twelve on the left side of this slide as a flag lot with twenty point one feet of frontage adjacent to lots eleven and thirteen. The city's engineering staff have reviewed the development proposal and have not found hazardous conditions created for vehicular or pedestrian traffic if all conditions are adhered to. If approved, the planning commission would be granting a twenty percent reduction from the required twenty five foot minimum frontage requirement. The second modification request is for an increase in lot coverage for R one zoned lots. N M C fifteen four or five forty requires that R one lot coverage is limited to forty percent, fifty percent if all buildings are one story, or sixty percent for townhouses, which are not proposed in this development. Fifteen four or five also limits parking coverage to thirty percent and the combined lot and parking coverages in R ones zones to sixty percent. The applicant is requesting that the maximum lot coverage of R one lots be increased to fifty percent, and the application materials indicate that some dwellings will be one story and not need the additional coverage, but that other dwellings would in order to provide larger, higher bedroom cap dwellings, providing a diversity of housing for Newburgh. The request does not seek to increase the parking or combined coverage, so the overall maximum site coverage would be consistent with some lots trading parking area for building area. If approved, the planning commission would be granting a ten percent increase in the maximum lot coverage in the R ones zoning district for multi story dwellings. The third modification is to allow buildings on certain lots to intrude into the sun exposure plane in the planned unit development standards. The sun exposure plane, which is illustrated by the N M C figure on the right of the slide here, is an additional height limitation for planning developments based on lot orientation. Here you can see the applicant's images of the proposed intrusions. The red highlights are for R one lots, which you can see also highlighted on the tentative plat on the right, which have fairly limited impacts into the sun exposure plane. The blue and green are in the R three high density residential zoning district and represent a slightly more significant plain intrusion depending on the orientation of the lot. The application materials, an applicant indicate that these R three lots are arranged in a higher density zones and are arranged to increase the efficient use of the site and provide larger dwellings. Also discussing an eyes on the street impact in the community. And if approved, the applicant is being conditioned elsewhere in the decision to provide sun exposure plane diagrams with building permits and middles. If approved, the planning commission would be allowing the identified properties to intrude into the sun exposure plane. And as discussed in the Southport findings, South is recommending approval of the modifications. The application materials included floor plans and elevations for proposed dwelling types and also setback lines on proposed lots, but did not identify which dwelling type will be placed on which lot. So lot coverage and building height will be evaluated for compliance at the time of building permit review. And conditions are being imposed to i i identify compliance at that time. No private suits are proposed, and the approval is being conditioned to include a ten foot wide public utility easement along public street frontages. New and relocated utilities are to be undergrounded and site plans submitted for building permit approval will be required to indicate compliance with the ten percent usable outdoor living area requirement of the P U D standards. The stream corridor is present along eastern portion of the property, and prior to any site modification, the applicant shall submit a stream corridor modification request. The applicant has also acknowledged the possibility of a performance bond for the completion of the required landscaping. The P U D is also required to meet forty percent of the multifamily residential guidelines and standards, which equal eight points. This includes site design elements such as private and shared recreation areas, landscaping, street trees, outdoor furnishings, entrance building materials and outdoor lighting, where the P U D achieves nine points, and building design elements such as building orientation entrances, height, facade design and materials, where the P U D achieves eleven points. The applicant will be required to submit additional information on the proposed outdoor shared recreation area prior to step two approval of the P U D process. The applicant held a pre application with the conference with the city in January twenty twenty four. All required fees and application materials were paid and submitted. The application, the applicant submitted a measure forty nine waiver notice from the annexation approval last year and will be conditioned to submit a new measure forty nine form for the planning and development approval. Moving on to the P U D type three criteria. First, that the proposed development is consistent with standards, plans, policies and ordinance is adopted by the city. As demonstrated in the findings and upon adherence to the conditions of approval, the proposed P U D is consistent with the standards and policies in the Newark Municipal Code. Second, that the proposed elements general design and character, including but not limited to anticipated building locations, bulk and height, location and distribution of recreational space, parking, roads, access and other uses will be reasonably compatible with appropriate development and abutting properties in the surrounding neighborhood. The subject property was recently annexed and is adjacent to the Allison Inn in Yankton County. Residential agricultural uses, comprehensive plan and zoning district designations were assigned through the annexation process. And the proposed configuration meets the applicable development standards for those districts. Abutting undeveloped parcels within the city limits have a comprehensive plan designation of Springbrook District Low Density Residential and will be expected to develop to do standards when developed. Because the P the proposed P U D meets the standards of the designations that were applied when annexed and is not adjacent to other residential development within the city, the criteria is met. Um next, that public services and facilities are available to serve the proposed development. If such public services and facilities are not at present available and a fervent finding needed me under this criterion, if the evidence indicates that public services and facilities will be available prior to the to need. Public improvement plans were submitted demonstrating public facilities to be provided, including water, sanitary and storm sewer, electricity and potential natural gas. City engineering findings indicate that public services and facilities can be made available subject to conditions of approval. As discussed in the findings in the staff report and upon adherence to the conditions of approval, the provisions and of the Newburgh Municipal Code um will be met. Next, that proposed buildings, roads, other uses are designed and cited to ensure preservation of features and other unique or worthwhile natural features and to prevent soil erosion or flood hazard. As discussed previously, a stream corridor modification application will be required prior to site modification and no flood hazard areas are present on the site. That there will be adequate onsite provisions for utility services, emergency vehicular access and where appropriate public transportation facilities. City engineering staff provided findings that utility services can be provided, and the applicant submitted a Walton Valley Fire and Rescue Permit Approval for emergency access. Um sufficient useful recreation facilities, outdoor living area, open space and parking areas will be conveniently and see if they accessible for use by residents of the proposed development. Individual lots will contain outdoor living areas and parking, which will be verified at the time of building permit review. And the applicant is also proposing a shared outdoor recreation facility provided on track A. And finally, that proposed building structures and niches will be arranged, designed and constructed as a take into consideration the surrounding area in terms of access, building scale, bulk, design, setback heights, coverage, landscaping and screening, and to ensure a reasonable privacy for residents of the of the development and surrounding properties. As discussed previously, because the abutting residentially designated zoning districts are undeveloped and the proposed P U D configuration meets the site standards in the respective zoning districts, the design of the P U D demonstrates compatibility with um future development of abutting residentially zone properties in the surrounding neighborhood within the city limits. Conditions are of approval provided in exhibit B to fulfill the purpose and provisions of the Newark Municipal Code. Moving on to zoning districts, single family dwellings are permitted use in the R one and R three zoning districts. They are limited to one per lot in the R one zone as proposed here and are only permitted through in the R three zoning district through the P U D process. The site is in the airport overlay sub district, which includes a building height limitation of approximately one hundred and ninety to two hundred and seventeen feet across the site. The proposed dwellings will not exceed the R one and R three building height limitations, thirty and thirty five feet respectively. And as we um discussed, approximately point three four acres along the eastern portion of the site are within the stream corridor overlay sub district. The application materials indicate that no new structures are proposed in the stream corridor, and prior to site modification, the applicant will be required to submit a stream corridor modification request. Moving on to developer standards, the minimum lot size in the R one zoning district is five thousand square feet and the R three zoning district is twenty five hundred square feet. The smallest proposed R one lot is five thousand twenty two square feet with an average lot size of five thousand six hundred and nineteen square feet. And the smallest proposed R three lot is four thousand thirty three square feet with an average lot size of forty two fifteen square feet. Lot averaging is not proposed or required. The applicant is requesting modifications through the P U D process to the lot with requirement for lots twelve eighty two and eighty three. And all lots will meet the width, the thirty five foot width requirement at the front building line in R one zones. The applicant is requesting the modification through the P D process of the maximum lot coverage. And information on lot, parking and combined coverage will be required at building permits middle to verify compliance. The preliminary plan submitted indicate yard setback lines and floor plans, elevations, but not building footprints on sites. And so the applicant is conditioned to, in the adherence to yard setback requirements on plans submitted for building permit review. Street A is designed to continue to the west with potential future development, which we will discuss in more detail in a moment. Lots eighty two and eighty three, but a jog in the required right of way and easement area for this feature extension of street A. And so depending on design um solutions, the applicant may be required to indicate a special setback for planned rights of way for lots eighty two and eighty three. Only the applicant um will be required to indicate vision clearance triangles for service drives to the residential dwellings on plan submitted for building current review. Again, the plan materials indicated the floor plans and elevations, but but not identifying which floor plans would be on on which lots. And so building height limitation and site and building design will be evaluated at the building permit stage. The P U D modification request has been submitted for the sonic exposure plane. And each lot has public street access via frontage or proposed easement, access easement. The applicant submitted an approved TVF and our permit reviewed by the fire marshal. Now to landscaping, uh the applicant shall indicate the minimum forty eight square feet of required private outdoor areas for each dwelling on plan submitted for building current review. And while all the the dwellings proposed in the P U D are single family dwellings, the landscaping requirements in N M C fifteen four twenty ten be applicable to the P U D overall as a whole. Landscaping is proposed in tracks not intended for single family development. And landscaping for those lots with dwellings will be reviewed at the building permit stage. The P U D contains approximately seventy three hundred feet of street fundage, requiring approximately one hundred and ninety seven street trees at thirty five feet on center. The landscaping plans submitted indicate approximately one hundred and twenty three street trees are are provided. So prior to step two of the P U D approval process, updated landscape plans will be required uh identifying additional street trees or discussing conflicts which prevent the location of of street trees in certain areas. Street trees that are associated with lots for residential single family dwellings will be reviewed and inspected at the building permit process. And the application is being conditioned that the installation of street trees located on tracks not intended for residential development will be verified at the time of the final planning inspection and C of O for the first single family dwelling approved. Prior to step two of the P D approval, irrigation plans for tracks not intended for residential development will be submitted, and also a mechanism for maintenance of private tract areas not intended for residential development. And finally, there will be a condition that prior issuance of this of the certificates of occupancy landscaping will be installed or abon submitted submitted per N M C fifteen four twenty ten C. The applicant is proposing landscaping and amenities in the public right of way. Including the proposed outdoor recreation area and northeast Springbrook Road, including landscaping along sidewalks and the right of way. And a condition is that prior to step two of the P U D approval, a revised website plan and missing plan will be submitted demonstrating additional information on the shared outdoor recreation area, outdoor furnishings and planting ships. Exterior lighting, the floor plans and elevation is not indicate the final location of any exterior lightings on the dwellings. And street lighting is exempt from the exterior lighting standards in fifteen or twenty five. And so as part of the building permanent review process, any exterior lighting on the dwellings will be reviewed where applicable. The application materials indicate that all the new utility use will be placed underground and that undergrounding or relocation is conditioned. Parking, the amount of required parking and parking and service drive design for the single family dwellings will be verified at the time of building permit review. And the applicant is conditioned to submit updated site plans, including the location and design of required off sheet parking and service drives at the time of building permit review. Moving into the conditions for public improvement standards in fifteen five oh five. The plans submitted for public improvements are to meet the requirements of the city of Newburgh Public Works Design and Construction Standards. Proposed improvements should be completed in tandem with the extension of public utility lines. The applicant is required to obtain a public improvement permit, including water, wastewater and stormwater facilities prior to the building permit issuance. Condition two B ordinance number twenty twenty four and thirty one annexing the property requires the applicant to complete improvements on both sides of northeast Springbrook Road. And the applicant will need to align the improvements with the existing configuration of northeast Springbrook Road immediately south of the project's boundary, including bike lanes, curbs and sidewalks. The water main is of the development, um use will connect to the existing twelve inch water main on the west side of northeast Springbrook Road. Each lot and dwelling under separate ownership must have separate private utility laterals to a water heater or cleanout at the right of way line prior to connecting to the public main or double water service, double Y service. The closest existing any new fire hydrants are to be shown on public improvement permit plans, some middles and meet city and T V F and our standards. The wastewater main serving the development must connect to the existing fifteen inch wastewater gravity main between or beneath northeast Springbrook Road. And the applicant shall submit plans showing public and private stormwater management and conveyance facilities, meaning Newark Municipal Code standards. The applicant is required to include a ten foot util public utility easement along public street frontages, northeast Springbrook Road and local streets that are proposed. Northeast Springbrook Road and local streets that are proposed. Improvement should be made to both sides of northeast Springbrook Road, proposed streets should conform to the N M C and city design standards. And the advocate will be required to pay a traffic impact fee for the two impacted intersections proportional to the impact. Prior to the issuance of building permits, this is twenty four thousand six hundred and eighty nine dollars for the intersection of North. Springbrook at East Mountain View and fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty two dollars at the intersection of North Springbrook and Haller. The publicly proposed local streets within the P U D are. Designed to be to and through to facilitate future development to the west. And the the proposed extension alignment of street A intersects with lots eighty two and eighty three as shown on the right here. So the applicant is conditioned that prior to the issuance of public improvement permits. And updated Lance site plan, so we submitted indicating that the layout has been reworked to eliminate this jog in the history alignment. And ensure consistent right of way length of street A to accommodate future extension. Or an agreement in a form acceptable to the city submitted guaranteeing the dedication of required right of way and any required easements. At the time of extension to serve this future development. Prior to issuance of building permits, the applicant shall propose street names for review which do not duplicate existing names. Final plans submitted challenge to block lines consistent with the N M C and public works design standards if the configuration is changed. The applicant will need to reconfigure the northeast Springbrook intersection to exceed. The four hundred foot spacing requirement or apply for an exception. And prior to step two P U D approval, prepare an access easement for the shared driveway serving lots eighty two eighty three. And any additional shared driveways that may be added as development design continues or changes. Advocate shall obtain current approval from New York County for the required public improvement permits in northeast Springbrook Road. Prior to the issuance of a city public improvement permit or to work in the right of way. The public improvement permit will require a street landing analysis along northeast Springbrook Road. And newly constructed streets and plans including lighting necessary to meet city standards. The applicant is required to submit a wire distribution pump station, this is a design technical memo. With the public improvement permit and update with the city input incorporating feedback into final plans for the project. The applicant may be required to cover the expense of the consultant, specialty engineering expertise offered by the city for technical review of the basis of design. The wastewater analysis of impacts to the wastewater system is required to be submitted with the permanent applications. The stormwater management plan is to be prepared in accordance with public works that are construction standards. And the applicant is required to submit plans showing the areas of disturbance and pain in Oregon D E Q. Twelve hundred C erosion control permit prior to any ground storm activity if one acre or more will be disturbed. Four public comments were received and distributed to the commission in supplemental memos on February tenth and February twelfth. So they should be in your packets. And so staffs recommendation would be that the commission moved to adopt planning commission order twenty twenty five one with conditions. Approving P U D twenty four one, let go be a string work. In how kind of tax lot are thirty two oh nine oh twenty three hundred and deliberate on the requested modifications. To lot coverage, frontage access and the sonic exposure plane as requested by the applicants. And apparently. Planning Commission Order twenty twenty five one has been taken before us, so we are now at twenty twenty five five. And that is all from staff, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thingwell. Does the planning commissioners or do the planning commissioners have any question? Uh Laney, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious, James. Usually the. What is this called? The, um, hold on, I got it right here. The agency comments usually involve several additional sheets. That have more like waste management and teach like the twelve valley fire. Are we just not at that point in the process where those come through? Like normally there's like eight or nine of them. I only saw like our internal two. Um, is is that just because we're not that far in or what's with that?
So we did circulate the referral. On, I believe it was December tenth to the regular. Agency list and we only received comments back from those three. I believe that Newburgh Police Department, the Community Development Director and Engineering. So we just didn't receive any comments from any other. Referral agencies for this application.
Oh, okay. Normally they, it says reviewed and no conflict. Do do we know that they were reviewed? For sure, because usually it at least says reviewed and no conflict. It's not typically omitted.
So so. We don't don't require agencies to return that, you know, typically many. Agents do, but the kind of operating procedure is if no form is. Return that's taken as no comments. And you mean, yes, we do typically see more of them, so this was a light return process. But.
Okay, thank you. Um, very good job on reading through that, by the way. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright, I saw your hand up. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions for staff. Considering the traffic to impact fees, number twenty three is a conditional use on page one oh eight. Of five hundred and fifty two. Talks about the traffic impact fees for North Springbrook Road and East Mountain View Road, et cetera. I was wondering why. A traffic impact fee for the second roundabout from East Mountain View Drive and East Crescent View. Uh driver street that is within the city of Newburgh's comprehensive map is not consideration. And consideration of Benjamin Road hooking up to Willikenzie Street and Jory Street. Not included in an impact fee.
Brett, would you like to? Stop at that.
Yeah, I can, if I want to make sure I understand the question, the question is we have traffic impact fees that we have imposed or that are being conditioned on this. Are related to. The traffic impact analysis that was done and identifying where the the impacts are on on projects or on intersections where the city has projects that are planned in our T S P. So those are the two that came out of that, I believe. I'm not sure where you're referencing the location. I heard Benjamin Road and Jory Street. And related to a roundabout. And I'm not aware, there's not a big project for that, for that, if I understood that question correctly.
Coming down North Springbrook Road to East Mountain View Drive, when you head down east. Uh east mountain year dr- Mountain View Drive, it splits. And in the east, the roundabout, you can also go east Mountain View Drive to East Crescent View Street to ninety nine W.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure there will be people splitting off there and eventually taking that route or taking Benjamin. Loop. Uh to Willikenzie or Jory Street, which also hooks up to the roundabouts on East Crescent View Street. Maybe not now at this time, but they are there.
So the the Springbrook Road and East Crestview Drive has a roundabout that exists. And there were no impacts found in that based on an analysis. East Crestview Drive does can does take off to the. East and then goes through the Crestview Crossing Development and comes back to ninety nine W. And there's traffic circles and roundabouts all installed along that route.
So it was not perceived that there would be any future impacts to that area?
We did not identify any within that area for the where the traffic impact analysis was done for did not accommodate and we took those. Those were taken into account and as the background trips, the applicant's traffic engineer might be able to speak better to some of the details related to that.
Okay.
Uh Commissioner Mansfield, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I wanted to understand, I was getting kind of confused on. Uh the development of Springbrook Road that the applicant will be required to do, that is from the site. Uh to. The connection with Mountain View. Road, is that correct? Just that section that would be enlarged and modified? Did the city speak to that?
Yeah, James, I can take take that one as well.
Sure, correct.
It to be done by the this project would be taking the existing improvements of northeast Springbrook Road. That terminate at the city limits thereby kind of near where the Allison property is and extending that along their frontage. And so it'll just it'll stop just shy, it'll shuffle, it'll stop a little ways from the Benjamin and and Springbrook Road intersection. So it's just their frontage, but it is both sides of the roadway.
Understood, okay. Um, and then an additional question, this being my first P U D review, so I appreciate the patience here. At this juncture, we are. Approving or not approving based on their ability to meet the requirements laid out or. Slash and are we approving or disapproving? Uh the changes to or the. I forgot, I'm gonna mess up the word here, but the changes to code in terms of the the sunlight and the easements. And we can, or yeah, can can you speak to that?
Yeah, so the plan, um, you know. Development has the type three criteria, and so. A lot of the standards for development sites will be evaluated at the building permit stage, and so the criteria for the. The U D are largely the kind of step one criteria that that well, we went over. At the start, and then the three modification requests are are made. At this time to the planning commission as opposed to later to the building permit process or the type one kind of final plan. So you're kind of thinking about the P U D as a whole and then also those three requests to this. Individual development standards that then get reviewed later at the building permit process.
Understood, so just to confirm. If I were to, if any of the councillors here to have, were to take issue with the modification requests and think that they those. Uh should not be granted, that would be grounds to not approve this. P U D, is that correct? Am I understanding that right?
I think it would be grounds to not approve the modification and then for approving the P U D. You'd be looking at it more at at the P U D criteria, but you can approve the P U D while approving the modifications. Requested or some combination thereof. If that makes sense, so God, I don't know if you have any anything that you want to add.
So just to jump in there, if I may, we could approve the P U D but disapprove one or more of the modifications. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Matthew, if you finish with your question.
I need one clarifying question, then just, I'm sorry to. Uh ask so much, but so so on that. And this is maybe just based off of the last, the last meeting where we had such a specific instance here. Um, but for the P U D, we are just evaluating how the. How it meets Newburgh city code similar to the development that's going on uh on Hayes Street. It's not a. A review of whether or not it should be there, it's whether or not it meets all the requirements, is that correct? I may.
Yeah, yes, yes, please, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Jump in.
Thank you, Scott Segal, Community Development Director. So, uh, James, I think is correctly. Describe the the process and the criteria, the the three adjustments or modifications to the standards. If the commission were to find. That one or more of those modifications were not supported by the applicant, by the application. And the evidence that's been presented, you would really, you would need to. You would need to apply the criteria which are in the purpose statement, so. As you're considering, as you listen to the applicant, you see their, watch their presentation. Um, and you're considering whether those adjustments or modifications to the shade point, the lot widths. And the lot coverage for dwellings that are more than one story. The purpose statement in fifteen point two four zero point oh one oh is. That's, that's how you evaluate that, you judge whether they've met that burden of proof. Now, the other standards, I think, is as Leonard King Wells reviewed the other standards. A staff did find that those standards were met or could be met with conditions of approval, so if you find that. Other elements of of the application, the layout and other. Objective standards have not been met, then you want to. Address those criteria or those standards. So there's really two sort of two layers to this. One is the overall development plan and whether it meets those. Development standards and design standards, and then secondly, for the modifications that they've requested. Uh, there is a more discretionary evaluation of that and you apply the purpose statement again in that section fifteen point two four zero point oh one oh. And that's.
And I think one other note kind of i- is that the the modification process through the P U D. Approval is is tended to give an applicant, you know, the opportunity to propose a dome as a whole and and discuss how. Those modifications might, you know, make for a holistic development as opposed to, you know, a standard subdivision. Approval, so the the modification requests are kind of considered in that. P U D process to kind of think about the development as opposed to just the standards on their own in in isolation.
Understood. Thank you so much for the clarification. Appreciate it, James. Appreciate it, Scott.
Yeah, thank you for that. Laney, could you go next?
I was just kind of expanding upon what Matthew was saying to make sure that I'm correct, um, understand this correctly too, in that if we. If we do approve with with conditions as recommended by staff, just to be sure I'm wrapping around this correctly. It is just for this application because to value, reevaluate and edit any code would be its own. Vote, right? So this is specifically to the application and not to city code.
Also, um, the first, and maybe I'll share.
While you do that, James, I just point out that the the one I'm just keeping my eye on is the twenty, was it twenty twenty one foot width? That was with conditions approved down from, I believe it was the twenty five. Minimum and I and as I think we know, a lot of the feedback we get about parking and street access has been a big issue, so I. I would be concerned about cutting back on that space if it would impact the lap. Minimize the amount of parking that would be available.
So the first. Um, so the. First of the P U D type three, so this this step one, you know, type three. Review with the planning commission is that the proposed development is consist consistent with the standards, plans, policies and ordinances. And so that's where a lot of the discussion in Southport about lot requirements, yard setbacks, buildings where. The evaluation of them will take place at the building permit, but the kind of criteria for the P U D type three is if they're met. And so those findings are are to kind of support that or how they will be met through conditions. The criteria or of kind of the design and character are are more about the. Kind of placement and and so that's where staff looked more at. Um, kind of what the applied comprehensive plan and zoning district designations were. What residential use within the city limits is for would be expected. To be with those adjacent designations. So while we looked at a lot of the kind of individual development standards, that's more in support of of this criteria one. That it's consistent with the plans and then the other criteria are some of the more subjective kind of fit. Items. So the decision and criteria for tonight are these type three criteria and then the modification. So the decision and cr- criteria for tonight are these type three criteria and then the modification requests, um, associated.
Does that clarify things for everybody? I think, um, so just to repeat back to, to you, um, how I'm understanding it, there's the overarching PUD that we could approve, but we have discretion on whether or not we would, would approve the modification within the overarching PUD. Uh, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's discretion in kind of the, the PD and then the modifications. And I think the applicant might speak to some of those, those subjective, you know, points as well. Uh, so kind of thinking about the PUD and then do the modifications contribute to a, you know, successful development project? And then will that don't affect it to meet the standards when it's implemented through, kind of, the next step of the PUD process is a type one final plans? Um, so that's where the advocate would take the conditions and requirements from this approval, incorporate them, work, work with staff to, uh, kind of finalize that and then have a final plan of, um, of approval, which is a type one, so a director decision. So it's taking the, the decisions that you all make and then kind of it gets, uh, confirmed through that type one final plan in the future, once those changes are made.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Wright, would you like to go ahead with your question?
Thank you. Um, I was wondering with the, uh, one of the requests of the applicant is for us to, to sidestep our type three review and put it to a type two review for stream corridor modifications? Because they don't have a grading or proposal for their water treatment facility on track B within the stream corridor. Um, is that also included in one of their modifications or request?
So that might be a, a request through the, um, public improvement process. And that was not one of the planned, planned unit development modification requests? Um, that were the lot frontage, um, lot coverage and sun exposure plan?
Mr. Record, would you like to go ahead, Commissioner Record?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to ask a question, um, about the traffic impacts study. And in my understanding of it is that, that's a, that study's done at a, under current or existing conditions. Um, and my question is, how, how do you take into account the traffic impact of that same area? Once, um, just down the road, once the, the Kalina at Springbrook subdivision is completed? It feel, it feels like that being a large subdivision is going to change that impacts study significantly. And it, was that even taken into account?
Brett, would you be able to take a stab at that?
Yeah, Brett Musick, Senior Engineer. So the traffic impact study, and again, the applicant's traffic engineer can speak in greater detail to this, but essentially there, the TIA does take into account background information. And that included these Crestview Crossing PUD is down by Providence, we referenced earlier, and then also the Kalina at North Springbrook subdivision as well. Those were both taken into account as background conditions for future buildup and elements there.
Thank you.
And, all right.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, I believe looking through the, uh, placement here, also the applicant references that the type three, type two application for the modification. Um, and I believe that is, uh, kind of based on, on what they're expecting the modification, type to be based on the city's code and the activity that would be occurring. Um, the modification permit, you know, when, uh, submitted would be, you know, evaluated to make sure that the right type of, activity is matching the right permit level. So I believe, um, and, and the applicant may speak to this if, um, there's additional information is that that's kind of an expected pathway based off of their proposed modifications.
And Mr. Siegel, you have your hand up, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I was just going to add that, uh, in the stream corridor overlay has different categories of development activity that are either subject to a, uh, they're either exempt or they're type one, type two, or type three. And so I think that's sort of the, uh, the triage that James is referring to, that depending on what it is they're proposing to do or that they need to do, there are certain allowances for, uh, stream crossings for streets and utilities and, and other sort of site development work that would either fall under a type two or a type three if it's not within that scope. So I think that's what they're expecting or what they're anticipating is that what they're proposing to do would be type two, but that would be reviewed as part of the public improvement plan. And if it did trigger a type three, then of course that would come back before the planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no more questions, let's move on to public testimony. Um, we'll be starting with the proponent. Um, you will have fifteen minutes, um, to go through your, uh, presentation. And then if there are any opponent, um, you will have five minutes each, um, to state your case. So, and then after that, then the, uh, principal proponent can, um, take the chair again to rebut any, um, questions that may come up. So do we have the proponents say?
Yes, we do. Mercedes with Three J Consulting is, um, in the room. Hello, everyone.
Go ahead, Mercedes.
Sure, let me just get set up for sharing and I'll share my screen. All right, good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. Thank you all for your time and flexibility on this snow day. And thanks to James for the staff report and presentation on the application. My name is Mercedes Sarah, I'm with Three J Consulting, representing the applicant, Ichijo USA. Our address is ninety-six hundred Southwest Nimitz Avenue, uh, Beaverton, Oregon, nine seven zero zero eight. With me today are members of the project team who are happy to answer any questions we may, you may have. Um, this presentation will give a brief overview and background of the site, the proposal of the application and how we meet the criteria. The site is nineteen point one six acres in total size, um, located at three eight oh nine Northeast Springbrook Road. A previous application annexed the property into the city and applied the comprehensive plan designation and zoning designations appropriate for a residential subdivision. The site is, has a split zoning designation with a mix of R1 low-density residential and R3 high-density residential, which was a requirement of the annexation, uh, to provide that mix. With the PUD application, we are proposing a one hundred lot residential subdivision that will be all single-family homes. This is the proposed lot configuration, taking access from Springbrook Road. And development will consist of single-family homes with a range of sizes between four thousand thirty-three square feet and seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet, providing for a variety of home designs. The entry road from Springbrook will feature landscape areas, including street line trees, stormwater areas and shared amenity spaces. The final design of the amenity space is still being determined, but will be finalized prior to submitting for step two of the PUD process. Utilities, including a twelve-inch water line and a fifteen-inch sanitary line, will be extended from the south on Springbrook Road to serve the development. A new onsite pump station will serve the residences in this subdivision as well. Stormwater detention will be provided in two areas, a smaller square located along Springbrook Road at the south end of the site and a larger facility located north of the new entry road. The stormwater pond will be planted and buffer plants will be provided along shared property lines. Subject site has an allowable maximum density of four thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven points based on the available land area in each zoning category through the city's PUD density system. The proposed development has a high-density calculation or a density point calculation of three thousand three hundred and eighty-one, which falls under the maximum density allowed on the site. As mentioned, there are three modification requests. Um, the first one would be for the twenty-foot shared access easement for the two proposed flag lots. The standard is for this, um, flag lot configuration to have a frontage easement of twenty-five feet. We are requesting to reduce it to twenty feet here. And then as part of this modification, we are also requesting that on lot twelve, we reduce the frontage from twenty-five feet to twenty point one feet. We are, in addition, requesting a reduction or a increase in the lot coverage standards for several of the, um, single-family homes on the R1 lots. Um, the development will include a diversity of housing types, including single-family story homes and smaller lot homes. Modification would allow for a maximum of fifty percent lot coverage rather than forty percent lot coverage for two-story homes. The maximum combined lot and parking coverage of sixty percent would still be met on these lots. And finally, the sun exposure modification mostly applies to the homes in the R3 zone in the north-south sun exposure orientation. The spacing between these single-family homes does not meet the minimum exposure requirement. This is applicable to eighteen of the homes in the R3 zone and a less significant, but still applicable to seventeen homes in the R1 zones. Uh, generally, this is for the side yard setbacks, uh, when the homes are, uh, meet the city's setback lines. Um, there still is sometimes an issue with meeting those sun diagram lines. The project will include two sub streets to the west to allow for future, future potential development within the UGB. Pot, project team has received approval from Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue regarding the dead-end streets and single-point entry to the site. All of the homes will be sprinkled as well to provide additional fire, fire suppression to the development. A traffic impact analysis was conducted for the site. The analysis found that the proposed development will add an estimated one hundred and eighty peak hour trips over the course of the morning and evening hours. Uh, the analysis also looked at four main intersections within the vicinity of the site. Of the four intersections within the study area, three intersections are currently meeting the city's operational measurement standard for level of service of D or greater. Intersection of Springbrook Road and Mountain View Drive currently operates at level of service E, which does not meet the city standard. The study looked at projections for twenty twenty-seven of these intersections and found that under both, uh, build of the development and no build of the development conditions, two intersections would not meet level of service E or better during PM peak hours. These are Springbrook Road and Mountain View Drive and then Springbrook Road and Hawth, uh, Howarth. The city has identified both of these intersections as candidates for future traffic signals. The provided analysis looked at whether warrants were met by the proposed development tool for both intersections to add traffic signals. Springbrook and Mountain View warrants were not met under the city's measurement and Springbrook and Howarth were met by twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. In order to provide mitigation for the impact of the proposed development on those two intersections, the applicant will provide a proportionate share of the cost for each of those improvements. The project will also improve, uh, Springbrook Road, which will include significant grading and widening to improve site distance for all scenarios, which will improve visibility and safety. Shown on the screen here, the existing surface of Springbrook Road in the light gray and the proposed design surface in the darker gray. The grading of the frontage of Springbrook Road will eliminate a hill that is currently blocking site distance. Vegetation will also be cleared to help provide for safer conditions for drivers. This image shows the improved site distance on Springbrook Road from a car traveling north and a car leaving the new intersection to the development. This image shows the site distance on Springbrook Road from a car traveling south and the car leaving the new intersection to the development. And finally, this image shows the improved site distance on Springbrook Road from a car turning from Benjamin Road and a car leaving the new intersection to the development. Ichijo, Ichijo Homes has provided high-quality homes and desirable communities across the Pacific Northwest region. Homes are designed with a variety in materials, massing and articulation to provide a dynamic community. Proposed planning unit development will feature well-built, high-quality homes in a well-designed community. And thank you for your time tonight, uh, Commissioners and city staff. Um, we can answer any questions you may have. I jotted down a few that you asked of staff and I'd be happy to answer those if you want me to just head on into those, those questions.
If you have answers to things already proposed, but please-
Sure, so, let's see, it looked like Commissioner Wright had a question about, um, cost sharing of proposed improvements. So there wasn't any cost sharing proposed for intersections, the intersection of Benjamin Road and Willa Kinsey or Benjamin Road and Joy, because those are, will be fully constructed and funded by the time the development is, uh, approved and built. Then the Gomi project will contribute about twenty vehicle trips during the peak hour on Crestview Drive and those roundabouts and intersections along that street are newly built and won't require improvements or traffic impact fee payment based on the level of trips from this project. The second question from Commissioner Wright was regarding the stream corridor. Um, there's no attempt to sidestep the type three, um, based on our understanding and preliminary look at the code and our site, we expect this would be a type two application. Um, and so that is what we will be submitting following this application.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the Commissioners?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, be a fun there. Um, I was wondering, uh, how much lighting, how do you guys figure out the lighting on the dark roads going towards the new development?
Um, so lighting is generally a city standard, so we would be proposing lighting on roads in accordance with what the city would require and allow for street lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Laney.
Um, I was just curious, coming, I'm kind of stuck on this, um, conditional approval for the, um, narrowing of the twenty-five to twenty-one foot width, um, and as far in the conditional request to the lack of lighting, the sunlight thing. Is, is there a reason that, that is being asked to have a conditional approval rather than just make the accommodations and the plans to allow that to work? Like, why not have fewer structures to allow the lighting necessary to not necessitate the conditional approval? And same for the width? Why, why not just make fewer structures that would allow the width to be what the code allows?
Sure, so, um, speaking of the, the driveway widths, we are proposing, as you can see where my cursor is on lot twelve, that decreased width on that corner. Um, twenty feet is a typical paved street, um, fairly wide fire-wise. Um, usually a driveway into a flag lot is not that wide. Um, and then on the site, there would be an additional two parking stalls in the driveway and two parking stalls in a garage. So we've just proposed that narrowing of that driveway to allow for a single car to come in and out rather than multiple cars to come in and out.
Okay.
Um, same with down on the, uh, lots eighty-three and eighty-two. Um, this reduces driveway widths and helps allow more on-street parking, more street trees. Um, this driveway width meets the necessary width to provide, uh, access to the sites and doesn't impact the amount of parking onsite or on-street as greatly. And then regarding the- And then regarding the higher density on the site, um, we're actually proposing lots that are much larger than the density for the R three zone within the R three zone. Um, while still trying to make sure that we provide the adequate density to meet the city's expectation of the site. So um while we could reduce the lots, um they would then no longer be those R three zone sized lots. So um the idea is to provide that mix of housing and those mix of housing sizes at different price points. Um, so reducing those and making the lots larger would kind of go against that idea. And I will add, um, the planned unit development regulations do provide in their purpose statement, um, the idea of flexibility and architectural design placement and clustering of buildings, um provisions of circulation facilities, parking, storage and site and design considerations as part of a P U D um to encourage kind of out of the box design.
Thank you. That actually is very helpful. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, um, on page one oh two of attachment one, I do, oh, never mind. Uh, page one oh two of five hundred and fifty two of this document, the storm water piping routes flow to one of two storm water detention basins. Um, three or more questions. One, at what capacity is the detention basins and gallons for redistribution into the storm water system? And at what capacity and gallons does this detention basin fail or potentially fail? Three, what pretreatment to storm water will be carried out? And four, is there any FEMA boundary present? And this is important aspect because the North Basin collects storm water drainage from a portion of the proposed development and appears to route. The pretreated storm water flowed to a drainage ditch in Culver beneath northeast Springbrook Road. And this is a class one type D Brook. Don't let the name fool you. That's just a British designation. Um, and it has to have fifteen or more service connections used year round by residents regularly services twenty five or more per year. Now downstream, we do have farms um that do uh remove water from the streams for crops and other things. How would you make sure that the downstream is not um affected? Can you make any comment about that, please?
I'll do my best. Um, I am not a civil engineer, so I I do know it's uh rated for the twenty five year storm event. The treatment, I believe, is a LIDA, low impact development treatment swell. Um, and then there is no FEMA boundary on the site and um try, sorry, you can't actually see the storm water swell on this plan down at the south corner. That, I believe, connects into the city's storm water pipe system, um the lower one, and then the storm pond up above does connect and then ouch fall into the stream. So that, are there more questions? I can, it's possible we could promote our civil engineer to help answer the more technical questions.
Um, yeah, could you come on, comment on uh how the LIDA treatment swell works in pre-treating the storm water for redistribution into the South Brook Stream System?
Who? Um, I don't know if either Chase Wellborn would be able to be promoted or uh Jim Schmidt to help give a more technical answer to how LIDA systems work. Generally, it's a natural material and substrate uh system that allows the water to filter through and then uh once it's through that system, it comes out as treated. That's my best uh planning answer, but if we want a more technical answer, we might have to promote someone else.
So it it generally is a filtering for particulates?
Yes, it it works as a filter for particulates.
Uh, and nothing else such as oils, um, other uh fluids from cars?
I believe it includes those in as part of the treatment.
Okay.
Just promoted Chase into the uh room so he can speak to the questions too.
All right, Chase, you're up.
Good evening, Commissioner Mercedes did a great job on that one. Um, trying to make more clear answers out of this. It is a natural, it's a LIDA facility, so it's going to just have plants in it. But the way that it's been designed, it started with uh City of Portland came up with standards about twenty thirty years ago after studies of what types of plants take heavy metals and petroleum products and those kind of things out of the storm water that's going down our streets and curbs. And so those plants are required to be planted in LIDA facilities, which will go in here. So all the storm waters uh but into that pond where it has to stay in there for a certain residual time where it filters through the plants, the plants suck up the bad materials. And then that would cover the treatment aspect. And then there's also a detention aspect where um in this case, we'd actually be, this is a increasing the impervious area. So with all the streets, you're going to be getting water going faster out of the system than it was right now when it was planted with farmland. So there's a detention requirement from the city to slow down the water to uh historic levels. I can't think of the exact term. But it's uh slowed down to the historic levels and so it's, this water is going back uh back out at pre-development levels.
Okay, so that will be um the figures of upstream and downstream basin per requirements of the public work, design and construction?
Yes, it is. This has to be followed for all of these aspects.
Okay. And then if my last one for Mercedes, hello again. Um, as the applicant has asked for an increase in coverage to lots for larger amount of bedrooms or per house, per property. The top bank of the stream is in the back of lots twelve, eleven, ten and nine with a spring on lot four as ID'd by a biologist. How will you protect the stream if allowed to build up to sixty percent total lot coverage in the R three zoning? And would the applicant consider lot number twelve for their green space instead of the variances allowing for proposed greens? They propose green space to be a turnout for a bus and vehicles promoting safety and our traffic um grid and safety of people entering and leaving as well as using um Bell Road and Springbrook Road? Can you make a comment on that, please?
Sure. So um just to clarify, lot coverage, um the request isn't for every single lot in the R one zone and and it's just really for some of the lots. Um, I haven't identified.
It looks like. Do you tell me? I think you froze for a minute there, Mercedes.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm getting an unstable connection, so I'll turn off my video and hopefully that'll help. Um, so not every one of those lots will have a full sixty percent uh coverage. It will really depend on which house goes on which site. Um, and we would be meeting the requirements for setbacks and coverage for those uh lots there on the eastern boundary. Um, and building setbacks will be modified and the coverage will be modified in accordance to make sure that we would be outside of any habitat as required by the city. Um, the second part of turning lot twelve into uh an area for buses to back up that um based on our engineers' uh design and comments would not be a a great place for a school bus to back up as it would.
No, no, lot twelve um for a green space just for a playground and area for enjoyment, outdoor space.
Oh, okay. So you you would want it to be added to our green space or moved from move our green space over to that area?
Um, originally, you have uh your green space as upfront uh close to the road. And I was wondering, well, even as a parent, if I had purchased a building or property in this area, I wouldn't let my uh family members probably go to where you have it located at this time. Even though you have yard space, um, that's kind of out of the development. And it it would be nice to see lot twelve where you're looking for easement for your driveway width to be used for green space. Um, would you consider that?
Um, sure. So I would say that generally speaking, um, one of the qualities of a a play structure area that is in considered when citing it is um kind of an eyes on the street. Uh, multiple people, homes, cars being able to see that area. So um in our design and when we were picking out the area, we didn't want to tuck that away into a corner where it might be hard to see and hard to monitor by the neighborhood. Um, so we felt that that corner area wouldn't be an appropriate place for that. Um, along the street, we understand, you know, cars will be coming up that area. Um, kind of typical for most of the development, cars will be coming up and going to their homes. Um, we do believe that the curve in the street will help slow down cars and the grade on the site would also help slow down cars as they come up that hill into the development um and help protect that area. It is also setback from the street a bit. And then there's also that path kind of around it to help uh provide some additional protection away from the street.
Okay. I under- I understand that um your ideology behind that now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Mercedes, I have a quick question. Um, could you explain a little more about the modification three and the number of lots that would be impacted by um the intrusion into the sun exposure plane?
Sure. And let me see if I can back up to the, oh.
Oh, I like the picture.
I know. Let me get back. Let me see if I can back up to the um sun exposure plane diagram. It's kind of a tricky one to understand and explain. I know James had quite a few of it them identified. So um in this configuration, these are lots one through eight in the north-south direction. So this portion of the home is in that sun plane, which means that this very bottom part of the neighboring house in the east-west direction doesn't get sun um at certain parts, at certain times of the day. And then in the other direction, that's not as big of a concern here as the sun comes up. So essentially, when in the city, homes are located on the setbacks, um they can make it so when the sun is far in the east, it intrudes into the area where the first floor would be and the first floor on the side yard setbacks might not get as much light. Um, so that is the issue with the sun plane diagram. I'll go back to the plan and kind of illustrate, I think, where we had thought that that would be happening. And that was the most extreme example of how it would happen. Um, so I believe lots here in the center of thirty-two through forty and then forty-three through fifty-one would have a much more minor intrusion into the sun plane diagram area. And then lots one through eight is where that more um intrusive area is. And lots eighty-nine through ninety-nine, there is a less, a more minor intrusion into the sun plane diagram.
That's quite a few though, isn't it? So with the, with the ones that are more major, um, you know, I always think of children and children liking to go up, you know, they like to play outside, but also I'm also thinking about, you know, just sunlight coming through your window. Particularly in the winter time, you need as much light in Oregon as you can get, really. So I guess particularly for these lots on the right-hand side of your screen, is it gonna severely impact? I mean, to what extent is it going to impact um sunlight actually inside the house?
Right. So first I would uh specify that all of these homes will have garages on the first floor. So um a large portion of that area would actually just be garage space from the side yard as the sun moves across the sky. Um, and then there would be just uh, you know, obviously there will be backyards in this on the properties as well. Um, and so it would just really be kind of not large amounts of space on the first floor. They would still get sunlight from the um front and rear of the yards without any impact into the sun exposure plane. It would really just be those side windows where they, you know, homes face each other's other side windows. Um, and may not get as much light, but um usually those are spaces that might be, you know, bedrooms or utility spaces or spaces that might not need as much light.
But there'd be pretty dark houses all in all?
Um, I would say that, you know, we've had this um issue come up in Newburgh before and I wouldn't say that they always are dark houses with a five-yard setback. Um, it's just that maybe on the first floor, there's a little less light than on the second floor. Um, only on those rooms coming from, like those rooms may have windows also on the uh front and rear of the house that would allow more sunlight as well.
Hmm, okay. All right, well, um, looks like Commissioner Wright, you have a question?
Yes, one last one. Um, Mercedes, thank you for uh being patient with me as well. Um, what track is the hill being removed from to improve site distance?
Sure. So the the hill being removed is actually on Springbrook Road, they are cutting down the current alignment of the road to lower the elevation of the road because there's a hill within the road. Um, doing so will remove that bump that I believe um is really apparent when you drive that road. And in doing so, that does impact the grading at the front of the site. So there will be some grading into the site to help accommodate that, but it wouldn't be uh a hill removed on the site necessarily. It'll slope down from the site and then into the new configuration of the road.
Yeah, because on site C, if you have two streams that come together as a tributary. Oh, that is so cute.
Sorry, my son.
Oh, no.
Just trying to fix the screens here.
Babies are allowed. We love them. We love kids, kiddos. Um, okay, yeah, because track C has two streams that come together as the one tributary. Um, so I was wondering if it was that. That's great. Um, so that is pretty much all the questions that I had for you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Okay, thank you so much, Mercedes. It looks like we can move on to any opponents that we might have. Uh, say, are there any opponents online?
Um, no one has their their hands up, so I'm assuming they don't want to speak at this time.
Okay. Um, so it looks like um commissioners, we could just move on to our discussion.
I take that back. I have uh someone that just raised their hand.
Oh, okay. Have they been promoted?
Yeah, I asked them if they would like to come and they're not. Oh, here we go.
Now?
Oh, hi, Tracy. Can you state, can you state your name? And then, um, you've got, I'm gonna time this so that you have five minutes.
Sorry, we're having audio problems. Uh, my name's Tracy Wagner and uh Scott Huffman also submitted the letter. So um I think we are still, I was happy to hear that there is an alignment change proposed on Springbrook and Benjamin. We live on. We live on Benjamin Road. And so even now, we're seeing uh quite an increase in traffic on our road, which is county. And so I'm can interested to know, would the speed limit be changed on Springbrook Road with the new addition? Is that a consideration?
Um, I'm not sure who that's the question to, but um maybe you can uh the city can respond to that after you've finished your testimony.
Okay, uh, go ahead. You said you had something.
Then also the uh um the culverts down on Springbrook, um, I don't know how old those are, but I know that there are multiple culverts going underneath the street there, and that'll be right below the uh water retention above that. Um, are those set to be re- or replaced and brought into modern standards? Because right now, there's an awful lot of water that runs down through that, especially during peak rains, rain seasons.
Uh, once again, I believe that's a question for the proponent and or the city.
The proponent will have a rebuttal time and that'll be addressed at that moment. So now that you've posed them, we can come back once that point comes back.
Then also, um, we we had um agreed with moving the green space up into the more of the residential area where the children can play and not having it down where all the traffic is coming and going near Springbrook, which Springbrook is very busy during certain times of the day. So just make note that it um would be better if it was up in the uh the subdivision.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
Do you? No, just we we just don't really like the density up there. We don't really think that um a hundred plus cars every morning coming down off of there is gonna be good for the um the traffic, but it is what it is. So I think that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for for um coming to speak this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Fay, do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
I do not see anyone.
Okay, so um Miss Mercedes, I'm wondering if you could um answer a couple of those questions for us.
Sure, so um regard- first, we wanna thank the neighbors for their comments, and we did read uh their letter as well. Um, you know, we are not able to actually change the speed of the road ourselves. That is something that is dictated by ODOT. Um, I believe what the city can do is request that ODOT conduct a speed study for that road. Um, but that's not something that we as applicants are able to do. Um, regarding the culverts, uh, we won't be improving the culverts. However, our stormwater facility will ensure that um stormwater is collected and only released at rates um of the existing conditions and not really uh increase water to the culvert. Um, and then there was a question about density. Um, we understand and and can understand that they live in a more rural part of the city or well, outside of the city limits. Um, and this is a new residential neighborhood going in. Our density um proposed does meet what the city has visioned for the site um in their comprehensive plan map, and the proposed lots are actually um within the range and a little bit on the larger side in some of the areas, uh particularly the R-three zone. Um, so we're, you know, trying to be thoughtful in how we design the site and make sure that we provided uh a high-quality residential neighborhood, as we know our neighbors are outside of your urban growth boundary. And as mentioned, you know, w- we think the location of the playground area amenity space within that larger complex of green space um will be a benefit and uh is located about three hundred and fifty feet from Springbrook. We'd like to think that we've thought about the design and the safety impacts and located that space where we think it will get the most use and feel safe to the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Planning Commission, um, do you have any comments? I mean, uh, in terms of uh discussion at this point? Thought? No one?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah.
This is Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ah, okay. Um, I'm not sure how the swell will ensure that the uh runoff going into the stream can is at a certain rate if it's not a basin and a swell. I'm not sure how that works. That's kind of questionable to me. Um, as far as rate, I I think it's great about how it takes out the uh pollutants and things like that. But how do you actually control the rate from one of those? Um, and I also have a concern about the sun exposure. I've been, I went and visited uh a friend of mine that has a place down in Crescent View. And if there are these row houses, there is one window in the room on the bottom floor. And the rest of the whole house is blocked by the garage and doors and stuff to the garage, so there literally is no light other than maybe a small window in the doorway and one in the window. Um, if you wanted a garden in your backyard, I'm not sure if that really affects that. Um, and I think this also that design adds to people having to use electricity. Um, which to me with the raising and keeping costs down kind of contributes to that. And then the livability. Um, density is something as commissioners can uh make decisions on. And it's a huge density of two hundred and twenty-five people in a rural area. And I think that really does affect the livability in this case.
And I think I have to agree with you. Um, having said that, I think I've done things in the wrong order, so. We were supposed to have a staff summary of written testimony. Um.
Well, let's go back.
Yep, so um Fay, do you want to um give a summary of the written testimony?
That would be James.
Okay.
And I think I think I have to close. The, if, are you guys done with the um public comment portion?
Yeah. I believe so.
Then you have to close the public comments portion.
Okay. So um I'm closing the public comment portion of the meeting now and we should go on to the staff summary of written testimony.
So I I believe and and Fay correctly heard wrong that no um written testimony was received after the second supplemental memo um was sent out. So all of the written comments were um distributed to um commissioners via the supplemental um memos, and there was no additional um written ta- testimony received later to summarize.
Okay, so I'm closing that part of the meeting. Any final comments from staff?
Um, I think staff's recommendation would be that the commission moves to adopt planning commission order twenty twenty-five five, so amending that to be zero five. Um, approving the PUD twenty-four one, New York Springbrook, Yamah County Tax Lot, R thirty-two oh nine, twenty-three hundred. Um, and a- a- as um commissioners deliberate if uh additional findings are made to amend the uh order that um kind of uh findings be uh documented as a- as far as the rationale and criteria behind those changes that the commission may may make. Thank you.
Okay, so now we can go on to the deliber- deliberation of the commission. So um Commissioner Wright, I know you had said um had made some comments. Does anybody else have any comments? Or thoughts around there?
Yeah, Commissioner Mansfield here. Um, I I think part of the difficulty with this is, yeah, it's it's uh next to such a rural area, but uh however, it was established when it was annexed back in twenty twenty-four, it was established as a R-one, R-three uh space. So uh, no, no matter who owns or builds here, uh, it's set to that R-one, R-three, so we're gonna see that increased density. Uh, I think that the discussion of having the first floor be garages uh for those areas that are most impacted by the uh that'll decreased light, um, they're still gonna see a lot of light coming through in all of the living spaces. I do agree with Commissioner Wright that is gonna have an impact on those backyards. Uh, but not as much of an impact as if uh living space is on the first floor. Um, so I just wanted to to make that that comment. Um, I am definitely still concerned about the uh space uh provided for the, I guess, the easements, reducing it by that five feet on each side so that or five feet total, so down to the twenty from twenty-five. Uh, kind of permitting the ability for two cars to pass through. Um, I I get that it's probably a a relative industry standard to fit that in where needed. Uh, still seems like a complication that that could be avoided. Uh, so I'm I'm definitely uh, you know, struggling to see the the benefit there. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make those comments.
Blaney?
I I really appreciate where um Commissioner Mansfield was coming from because I obviously was kind of fixed on the same sort of thing, but um as Mercedes kind of walked us through that, I just, I noticed the um limited capacity, which that would affect the greater space. It was like effectively three, maybe four different specific properties when you look at the particular driveways. So it wasn't necessarily like some of the places I've seen in town or other proposals that have come up, or it would have been like the overall street width or it wa- was particular to per- specific structures, given the direction of which the driveway would have the entry. So I I I agree, I wish we didn't necessarily need to do that, but it seems like more accommodating than a lot of stuff that I've seen in the past, and I appreciate the effort that was put into that. Um, Chris, did I see you had another thing, or may I make one more comment?
Go ahead.
Um, this is the first time we've done a virtual in a while, so I would like to make a motion. That being said, and I can't see anyone's faces, if anyone would prefer to make any additional comments before I do so, just please, please say or raise your hand or something.
Okay, um Commissioner Quinn, um, I would like to make a motion that we um vote for um the staff recommendation that the commission moves to adopt planning commission order two zero two five zero one with accordance of approving PUD two four dash zero zero one, may go me at uh Springbrook, Yamah County Tax Lot, R three two zero nine, zero two three three, or zero two three zero zero um with conditions.
Commissioner Dale, second the motion.
Uh, really quick, it's actually, the uh order is twenty zero two five dash zero five.
Oh, yes, I think that was verbalized. It was, yes, thank you. Um, PUD two four dash zero zero five. Is that correct?
It's PUD, so it's PUD two four dash zero zero one, but it's order number two zero two five dash zero five instead of one.
Planning Commission Order.
Okay, can I just like ditto what Fay said there? I'm looking at my screen, I'm getting, I'm confusing myself.
So Fay, could we have a roll call on that?
Yes, uh, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Amy Quinn.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
No.
Elise Stefan.
Yes.
Matthew Mansfield.
No.
Linda Newton-Curtis.
Yeah.
Randy Rickert.
Yes.
Jose Valiaballo.
Yes.
Six yeses and two noes.
Okay, motion passes. Um, so we should move on now to items from staff.
Thank you, Chair. This is Scott Segal. Uh, just a few updates. I wanted to make sure you're aware, if you weren't already, that City Council has approved their goals for this year. And among their goals uh for planning, uh they've continued to prioritize work on the land needs analysis and uh evaluation of the urban growth boundary for employment lands. So that's the industrial and commercial land use inventory. So we'll be working on that this year. And you can expect updates on that as we get closer uh to adoption of the employment opportunity, economic opportunities analysis, which is already before the council, but it was put on pause, as you might recall. So once the city has adopted that EOA, then we'll move into the next phase of work uh which Planner Tenwell is leading and and will be happy to uh provide you with an update on that as we get a little further along. Uh, Council's also prioritized completion of the short-term rental or vacation rental policy review and potential code amendments uh following up on the ad hoc committee's recommendations. And I believe you have uh uh two work sessions scheduled over the next couple of months. It will be bringing um updates and and asking for your direction on different policy options for short-term rentals. Uh, we also have direction from the City Council to update the street tree list. Um, this list of uh trees that are allowed within the public right-of-way and planter strips, for example, is outdated, and we know this, so um the city is interested in updating that as well as reviewing and and uh clarifying the policy for replanting of street trees when they're uh removed. And that's something that you can expect to uh be working on later this year. We haven't uh identified any dates on your calendar yet, though we'll be working on that, bring forward a a scope of work and a schedule. Um, the city's also going to be applying for a State Historic Preservation Office grant to uh perform a review and update on the historic properties list. So removing properties from the list that have been uh demolished over the years, you know, cleaning that up, um updating the profile sheets for uh properties if they've changed and potentially identifying uh properties that are either newly el- eligible, because those properties that are fifty years older older are are eligible and the last time the city uh prepared an inventory was some time ago. So uh that'll be led uh by the Historic Preservation Commission um with staff uh practically led by staff and supported by the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, there's an emphasis, I think, on the the downtown, the historic properties downtown, as the City Council is also prioritizing their goal-setting um main street strategies and and efforts to improve the appearance and functionality of um the downtown area and the and the corridor. So ultimately, though, once that that work wraps up, if we have any uh policy proposals or code amendments, um or strip landmarks, alterations to landmarks or designation of new landmarks, and of course, that that would go before the Historic Preservation Commission, any code amendments would um be reviewed by the Planning Commission as well. So um I think that concludes the staff update. Your next couple of meetings, you can expect to um uh have uh more work on the uh have uh more work on vacation rentals. I think we had identified March eleventh for a tentative date for subdivision, the ten-lot subdivision on Orchard Drive. And uh the applicant has requested more time, and they've continued that. So uh I think tentatively, we're still holding that date, but we're not sure that that'll actually happen in March. And finally, in conclusion, I just wanted to uh report back that the City Council did conduct a public hearing on the code maintenance amendments the Planning Commission recommended. And the council uh unanimously approved those code amendments. So thank you for your support, your uh your your work on that. And that concludes the staff update.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. Um, do we have any um uh updates from commissioners? Anything the commissioners would like to um bring to the committee?
Uh, yes, yes, please, Commissioner Wright. Uh, staff, uh there's, on the anticipated schedule of planning commission activities, it's listed as March thirteenth and should be March thirteenth. I mean, March eleventh should be March thirteenth. Because March eleventh is a, does not fall on a Thursday.
Thank you for that, we'll make sure to make that correction.
You're welcome. And thank you, guys, for all of your very hard work and uh compiling these things for us to review. And I wanted to know if staff could please update uh the plant, the planning commission members to reflect that Linda Newton now is the chair and Laney R. Quinn is the vice chair. And then I would like to also know if staff can please update or give us a little uh well, however you can do it in a grid or whatever, our current land use analysis and new building to reflect an accurate picture of affordable housing needs remaining in the city of Newburgh. Um, for example, we've had a certain amount of apartments built since we did our afford uh housing needs analysis. And uh I'm wondering where we are at now in that. As far as what we need and what we've are showing a lot of. Um, and I hope the other commissioners would like that clarification as well.
No, I think it's a good question.
And that is it.
Okay, any other items from commissioners?
I I'd just like to say, I agree with uh Commissioner Wright on that, because I know that there is a housing study that shows how much needs to be coming into the city in a certain amount of time. And with the Springbrook Crossing Plan, like I I am too curious, cuz that is such a big development that's coming down the line. The last couple of meetings, we've approved these other developments, like here and then behind the drive-in. And so I am curious as to how this math is all adding up. Um, so if if there is a little illumination on that in the coming months, um that would be appreciated from myself as well.
Thank you, and I have one last comment. I wanted to welcome Elise Stefan, our newest planning commissioner, commissioner representing our student youth. And I wanted to thank you for volunteering your time and contributing to your community. And hello.
Hi, yes, sorry, I didn't have too much to contribute tonight. I was just kinda listening in and seeing how these meetings all work. And I'm loving, like, learning all about this. It's super interesting and I'm just loving it.
It'll be really nice to see you in personally.
Yeah, it's been a minute since we've had a Zoom, so we'll get back in the building soon and it'll be more sane.
Yeah, yeah.
And Elise and other commissioners too, um you can always go to YouTube and review any of the previous recordings um and get a feel for, I don't know, certain things that the commission's done, wordage, things like that, okay?
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. I'll do that before the next meeting.
All right, it's a great resource, YouTube. I love it. Well, wonderful uh that everybody remains safe this evening. Um, have a great weekend.
Yeah, you you too. With that, let's adjourn. Good night, everyone.